Ready?
Okay, good evening. I will call the September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission meeting to order. Will everyone please stand and will Commissioner Elmore lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The flag of the United States of America, a sovereign republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as we're all.
Staff roll call, please.
All Commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Reed, who is excused this evening.
Thank you. Okay, public comments. This is the time we take public comments on items that are not on the agenda, that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Are there any public comments not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, thank you. Moving on, requests for continuances. Staff, are there any requests for continuances?
There are no requests tonight.
Thank you. Okay, item number one, the minutes of the September fourth, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission hearing. Would anyone from the audience like to comment on the minutes from September twenty, September fourth, twenty twenty-five meeting? Seeing none, thank you. Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve with Mr. Mosher's edits.
A second?
I'll second.
Call for a vote?
Having a little technical difficulty.
Do a hand vote?
Can we do a hand roll?
Hand roll vote?
Yeah.
Hands up if you are approving, or just keep them down if you do not approve. Hands up, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item number two, Soul Mexican Casino Restaurant, PA twenty twenty-three dash zero one four four. The site location is two five one, one five one, and two oh one East Coast Highway. Ms. Tran, please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Chair Harris and Commissioners. My name is Jenny Tran and I'm the planner for this project for Soul Mexican Casino Restaurant. So this project is located at two five one East Coast Highway, as highlighted in green here. The project also includes a temporary outdoor dining patio located in this general area of the property. The project is located next to Balboa Marina, which is highlighted in orange, and is also across Newport Harbor. There is a residential community of Linda Isle, highlighted in blue. So to start with some backgrounds, this restaurant had some permanent approvals in the past, starting in nineteen sixty, where they had an approved use permit to allow the construction of the restaurant alcohol services. In nineteen ninety-eight, they had an approval for an attached outdoor dining patio, that is three hundred twenty-four square feet, and later nineteen ninety-nine, they had an approval for that outdoor dining patio to operate until midnight, and also for live entertainment. Additionally, there were temporary approvals for this property. In response to the COVID nineteen pandemic in twenty twenty, they had approvals of two temporary outdoor dining areas in the parking lot, and then a year later in twenty twenty-one, they had an approval to remove those two temporary outdoor dining areas, and then an approval to construct a new eight hundred and seventy square foot temporary outdoor dining area, again in the existing parking lot. However, only six hundred forty-one square feet of that dining area was built. This is a picture of that temporary outdoor dining area as it sits on the property today, and this also shows an aerial view showing the restaurant, that temporary outdoor dining patio, as well as that existing outdoor dining patio attached to the restaurant. This project includes a conditional use permit to retain that six hundred forty-one square foot outdoor dining patio on a permanent basis, also includes the request to expand the type forty-seven ABC license to include the outdoor dining patio that the restaurant currently has, and it also includes off-site parking. Because the project is in the coastal zone, it includes the request for a coastal development permit for the intensification of use in the coastal zone, and with this approval, it would supersede those past use permits and accessory outdoor dining permits. Just to go over some operational characteristics, the existing restaurant gross floor area will not be changed, there is no additions to the restaurant. Currently, the outdoor dining area is split between the permanent outdoor dining patio and the temporary outdoor dining patio, and the project requests to make all the temporary portion permanent. The hours operations for the restaurant are split into three categories, where there's the indoor dining portion of the restaurant, that permanent outdoor dining patio, and the temporary outdoor dining patio. Notably, the restaurant doesn't have any condition restrictions on hours operations, or as the permanent outdoor dining patio is allowed to operate till midnight. This approval requests the hours of operation between ten AM to eleven PM daily, which is consistent with how the restaurant operates today. So although they have approvals for late hours past eleven PM, they're not requesting any late hours. Additionally, a pass approval allowed them to have a live entertainment permit. They do not operate with the live entertainment permit today, but they could request one today if they wanted to. However, this approval of this conditional use permit would completely prohibit live entertainment for the restaurant. And finally, the restaurant has an existing type forty-seven ABC license, and there's no change to the type of license being requested. So for the parking situation on the restaurant, the temporary outdoor dining patio was constructed on top of seven of the existing seventy-three existing parking spaces. So even though there's a loss in parking spaces with that outdoor dining patio, the recent changes to the way restaurant parking is calculated ends up calculating to less parking requirement than what was previously required, where previously parking was based off net public area, today it's based off gross floor area, and this table demonstrates that although seventy-three parking spaces were previously required, only sixty-five is required today, and even with the loss of seventy-three spaces, they have sixty-six, which meets the parking requirement. Fifteen of those spaces are onsite, and fifty of those spaces are offsite. That offsite parking is located on Balboa Marina, again, highlighting green is the restaurant, and in orange is the Balboa Marina. There is an existing parking agreement with the Balboa Marina since nineteen twenty-three, and that parking agreement is still valid, and what is being used to allow the offsite parking. Access to the restaurant and offsite parking is via Bayside Drive and East Coast Highway, and is easily accessible from the restaurant. There is a red line to the condition approval, the resolution included our standard condition to require a parking agreement to be recorded, and the red line is to address the fact that they have an existing parking agreement, which should still comply with our code section for offsite parking, and that condition was broken up into a second condition to include the language "notwithstanding any existing parking agreement or covenant recorded against the property," and the rest of the standard condition that requires the operator to notify the city if there's a loss in offsite parking, and to address that loss of parking should that ever occur. The project also includes a coastal development permit, and this is again for the retention of the temporary outdoor dining patio, since it is an intensification of use in the coastal zone, and as previously stated, the update to the restaurant parking code now requires less parking than what was previously required before. This project will not impact any coastal views, and will additionally provide access to coastal views for patrons who end up dining on that outdoor dining patio. We received some public comments from some of the residents on Linda Isle, located across Newport Harbor. These comments were related to concerns with noise and any light pollution that may come from the outdoor dining area. We included a condition of approval to require a seven-foot, six-inch tall wall or partition on the water side of the patio. This is a condition that was carried over from the previous accessory outdoor dining permit. Currently, they do not have this sound wall, but we are requiring them to install one for that temporary outdoor dining patio. We did confirm with code enforcement that there have been no complaints since twenty twenty, so although we are retaining this outdoor patio on a permanent basis, there's no changes to what has been operating the last couple of years, both, as well as the operational characteristics, characteristics are the same as the last couple of years as it's been operating. Approval of this use permit will improve the hours of operations, since right now they are entitled to late hours, even though they don't operate with them. Further, it will prohibit any live entertainment, since they are also entitled to live entertainment permit, and now we are requiring a sound wall for that outdoor dining patio. There is also a comment asking if they can just enclose the entire outdoor dining patio. However, enclosing this would count towards floor area, they do not have the floor area to allow this area to be enclosed. Staff is recommending to conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA under Class One and Class Three, and adopt Resolution Number PC twenty twenty-five dash year one nine to approve the conditional use permit and coastal development permit. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm available for any questions. The applicant is also available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Tran. Commissioners, any questions for staff? I just want to confirm one. The existing, the patio that's been there forever, kind of the outdoor patio, that's allowed use till midnight right now, had there been any complaints on that one, or any, any issues with that one?
According to code enforcement, we don't have any recent complaints related to both that outdoor dining patio and that temporary one that's-
So any for the restaurant at all, technically?
Correct.
Thanks. Okay, Commissioners, any ex parte communications?
None.
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 None. None.
Okay, I will open the public hearing. Does the applicant want to make a presentation or comment tonight?
Good evening, I'm Gary Wiggle with Kaiske and Wiggle Architects, here representing the project, here to answer any questions you have, and we also have a representative of Soul with us if there's any questions of the operation.
Okay, do you agree with the recommended conditions?
Yes, we do, including the revised ones, number three and four.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant at this time? Commissioner Langford?
Thank you, Chair Harris. My question operationally, which is louder, your existing permanent patio or your temporary outdoor patio? Yeah, louder, do they kind of emit the same amount of, from the Linda Isle perspective, carrying across the water, which is noisier, which kind of carries more, is it the, you have the two separate patios, right? You have your permanent one, you have this temporary one we're talking about. Are they kind of similar? Is it seem more like an extension of one or the other? What kind of characteristics operationally have you seen that are different between the two of them over the last couple of years?
The existing one is fully enclosed, with glass on all three sides.
It's fully enclosed, okay.
Yeah, it's got glass on three sides and has an awning top to it. So it doesn't emit any, you know, noise theoretically outside of that. The other one will have the glass wall on the ocean side, or on the water side, but it is also physically further away.
Okay, yeah, for some reason I was thinking it was one of those, glass until a certain point and then it's open air.
No, it's full height and the awning kind of overlaps it. You almost feel like you're inside of a room when you're in there.
I see, okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, does anyone from the audience wish to comment on this item? Please state your name, you have three minutes, thank you.
I'm Benvenuti, and I live at one oh six Linda Isle, directly across the street. And I just want to start by saying that I know that it was said that there have been no reports, noise reports, but, you know, with COVID, when COVID was here, we were very lenient with the noise, and you know, you get out of the habit of complaining. We didn't want them to go under, you know, I'm a business owner, I wanted the business to survive, so we were open to the fact that they had these outdoor patios that were noisier, okay, they just were, bottom line. So when COVID ended, now we're looking at, it's still noisy, but I don't know, I lay there in bed and I'm like, do I want to call? No, I'm too tired. And you can hear the music, so to answer your question, sir, I don't know what's going on with where the glasses it was supposed to be when they extended it, enclosed, that you didn't hear anything. I hear music every time they have music, until eleven o'clock, sometimes midnight. So it does come through, and it, I have double windows in my bedroom, double walls in my bedroom, and I can still hear it. So the, the reality is, is that if this temporary licensure turns into a full-fledged patio, I think you're going to find with those hours that people will start complaining on Linda Isle. We can start calling and complaining if that's what needs to be done, because it is noisy. You hear clanking of dishes, you hear, always there's a gal cackling, there's smoke that comes across when you have an outside patio. It's reality, okay? And it's just too close to those residents. Um, I don't know, you know, we spent, ten years ago, this is all of what we went through legally with three thirty-three, because they were building that outside patio, and it came down to a lot of restrictions, and it just seems like now we're going backward with them wanting to have a patio that's kind of going against what we've been fighting. We fought this for five or seven years. So we kind of thought we were safe, and so I just have to say that I, I think it goes too late as it is. When they have to deliver food in the evening hours, they tend, and I understand why, propping the kitchen door, the open door, so you can hear what's going on inside the restaurant, you can hear music if there's a restaurant, and the clanking, as, it's just, you hear it because the sound resonates on the water. That's just your reality. So I, I am not in support of it, and I think we were very supportive of Soul during COVID, but COVID's over, and I think it's, I think it's time to quiet it down at night. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker, some motion?
Chair Harris, members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. As the previous speaker indicated, noise can be irritating, even if people have kind of learned to live with it and don't formally complain about it. So I would suggest, rather than having the same hours for the inside and outside, that the outside use, which is going to be a noise generator, be limited to closing or shutting down at ten o'clock, because our, our noise ordinance understands in our city that we have kind of quiet hours after ten o'clock, and this is near a residential area. I think it would be appropriate to limit the use there to ten o'clock, which is our time that the city is supposed to quiet down. Second comment I had is about the parking. There's a very large parking lot there, so it looks like it's no problem at the moment, but my understanding is the Irvine Company got an entitlement a number of years ago to put a very large restaurant, I think it's fourteen thousand square feet, at the far end of the parking lot where the Ruben Lee used to be, and if that entitlement is still available to them, I believe that restaurant, if I recall the discussion of it, would use the entire parking lot more. I think it actually needed a waiver, maybe the requirements have changed at that time. But I think you should be asking, is that still a valid and exercisable entitlement that they have, and if they exercise it, how is this possibly going to work with two, two restaurants, both needing that parking lot? And then, finally, the resolution would be repealing a number of other use permits that are already there, which I assume have conditions of approval on them, and I'm curious if all the conditions previously are carried over into the new ones. I'm looking particularly at the very last condition, which is, was number forty-one, but on the last minute handout, it's number forty-two. It says, for instance, the sale of alcohol to go-to patrons that dine within the expanded outdoor dining area shall be prohibited. Was it prohibited in the previous one? Why is it only the expanded one? And if there were other conditions on the previous outdoor one, are they still in here? That makes me wonder. So those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mosher.
My name's Paul Rozo. I am a staunch supporter of business, being a business owner, and as Leanne said during COVID, we definitely didn't want to see any businesses fail, so there was a, a great amount of tolerance that we accepted during that time, because we wanted to see these businesses make it through. However, to see, I feel like this is a case where give an inch and take a mile, that restaurant's been there forever without that expanded patio, which that patio was there because of COVID. And so, first of all, I purchased a property, regardless of paying seventeen and a half million for it, I sure as hell wouldn't have paid that, knowing that this would be on the docket this soon after purchasing it a year ago. I also own a property two doors down, and I can tell you every single night, we hear bottles clanking, we hear, as she said, people cackling after they get drunk, and though, you know, you can kind of live through some of that stuff, knowing that this is going to be permanent. I mean, I can hear, they've got a singer that, the guy, the guy should be probably singing opera, to be honest with you, and everyone that's been to Soul knows who I'm talking about, but I can hear him clear as day, with all my windows closed, all my doors closed, and my house was constructed about two and a half years ago. So it is definitely up to code, and it shuts as much noise out, but I can hear him clear as day, word for word, what he's singing, so I could not imagine. And though I saw up on the screen that there was going to be no live entertainment, that does not preclude the general noise that comes, it would not preclude that guy going outside and singing, and that would not preclude them with a volume control playing music on, on speakers. So again, the patio that's there right now, that's part of the restaurant, obviously blocks out as much noise as possible, but if you're talking about a seven and a half foot glass panel, that's not going to do crap. I literally live, I bought the home closest to Soul, I'm two hundred feet away from them, and the second home that I moved from was two doors down, which was probably the third closest home to Soul. So again, I'm a staunch proponent of supporting business, being a business owner myself, but I think this, this opens Pandora's box, in my opinion, and it's, I just, I don't want to live with that. So from my perspective, that's what I wanted to bring up. Is there any questions?
It's just your time to address us, thank you very much, if you have anything else. Thank you. Speaker, please.
Thank you, Commission, for allowing us to address you on this issue. I'm Donald McCullough, live at one oh five Linda Isle, right directly across, adjacent to my neighbor Paul who just spoke. I can echo his sentiments, and certainly those of Leanne Benvenuti, who just spoke earlier at, at one oh, one oh six. It's kind of like deja vu all over again, maybe. We spent at least ten years with three thirty-three, talking about the same issues. The difference that I see here is that in the case of three thirty-three, we had a substantial structure to talk about, one that could be attenuated. And we've always been honest with the program over here, it's been noise, noise, and noise. Now, in this case of three thirty-three, I lived closest to that, and was abused for those ten years, and required to come down here and try to fight for fewer hours and so forth. I understand from your testimony tonight that these people have, can go to late hours, that's even worse. But in the case of that outdoor dining deck, they have, there's no possibility to attenuate that thing, there's no structure there. In the case of three thirty-three, they had an openable ceiling, and they had openable and closable windows, and there was a chance of, of asking for attenuation, and we finally got most of that. And we also, the city was kind enough to spend a lot of time, you know, being sure that they were doing the right, right by us. So the last two or three years, really things tailed off, and we didn't, we didn't have any great problems, but when you look at that, it's a wide open space. We're there, and we have been kind, and not, that, that opera singer, believe me, I, he can hold a hell of a note, let me tell you, and he does it. So I don't know how you attenuate that. Again, we had the same issue with three thirty-three, and they said, well, we're only going to have piped-in music, whatever that means. But again, a volume control is a volume control, and that can be much worse than live music. So I, I think when you make this thing permanent, it gives everybody an opportunity to come back and ask for more, and then ask for more. In the case of three thirty-three, they did attenuate the building, but they were open till, I think, two o'clock in the morning, and that did create problems, until their business finally tailed off. So that's probably the most I have to say about it, but I hope, I wish you would think about what's there and the inability to attenuate anything with any substantial effect. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Debbie Artunian, and our family owns ninety-nine Linda Isle, and what my neighbors have said is so true, that the closeness to the restaurant, and we don't want to shut down anybody from having a business, but nobody understands how much the noise really crosses across the water, especially when people start drinking. I don't think the restaurant can really control what happens, because with three thirty-three, they were out there, they were urinating, they were, they actually even came on and crashed our gate, and came onto a homeowner's house. So I'm really against having any conditional use permit made permanent. I do worry about the Irvine Company's project, because it's going to be a big restaurant, and they're going to use all of the parking in there, so I don't think that Soul is going to be able to continue to use that parking. The other thing is, our house, the people, the way the parking is, they park and the lights shine into our house at night if they're parking, it's just the way it is. So between the noise and the lights, it's just not conducive to be a good neighbor. So I am not in favor of having a conditional use permit made permanent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, does the applicant wish to respond to any of this?
I know some tidbits of some of the answers. When the Irvine Company got their approval, that was where the allocation for the seventy-three spaces for Soul was perfected. So it's built into there that that's with their restaurant and this restaurant combined. And then the other one is, I think there's a willingness of the restaurant to limit the hours to ten, as the one speaker mentioned, on the outdoor patio.
Thank you. Staff, any comments for the record?
Um, yes, Chair Harris. Yeah, regarding the noise and three thirty-three restaurant, I'm just pulling up that approval, and so that patio is actually allowed to stay open till one AM, and so as part of that approval, there is additional sound reporting and conditions applied to that conditional use permit. In this case, the patio hours were being recommended to be pulled from midnight to eleven, and with the applicant agreeing to reduce the hours to ten PM, I think that'll help further reduce the, the noise, but at the end of the day, they'll still be subject to the city's noise ordinance. And then regarding the parking comment regarding Soul and the future Irvine Company project, I did confirm that the parking management plan and the parking study that was done for that future project did accommodate for the seventy-three parking spaces for Soul, so it's part of, of the overall analysis and accounted for. And then I just did want to note that for condition number forty-one, I'm sorry, the condition number forty-one, the intent is to prohibit the sale of to-go alcohol to patrons for the entire establishment, not just the patio.
Commissioners, any comments? Commissioners, any comments?
Well, I gotta close it. Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Okay, brings back the commission for discussion action.
Commissioners? Do you have some questions for staff?
Yes, go ahead. What is the status of the neighboring restaurant entitlement? Has that, is it still active, or has it lapsed?
It's technically still active. That's the CDP that was approved by the Coastal Commission, and the applicant has kept that entitlement alive.
So regarding noise, I see condition 16 is all noise generated shall comply with chapter 10.26. Is that similar to what is in place now as a condition?
Yeah, it's a standard condition that we apply to all restaurants.
Okay. Okay. And it's right, is live music, this opera singer, is this considered live music that is currently allowed or not?
Correct. So under the current use permit, live entertainment and a live performer of any sort would be considered live entertainment. It's currently allowed, but would now be prohibited.
Would now be prohibited. Okay, okay. Thank you.
So my thoughts about sound here, if there is music being piped out there currently, and I didn't notice where the speakers were when I was out there today, could those speakers be eliminated so that there was no music out there as an opportunity? And I guess that grassy area that's right next to the seawall, that's a view corridor, I believe, so we wouldn't be able to request additional plant material or anything in that location? Or do you, is that true or not?
Yeah, I mean, the commission has the ability to apply a condition that would restrict, you know, speakers within the patio. You could request additional landscaping. I don't think the intersection is identified as a designated coastal view road or area, but we do strive to maintain views of the water.
Yes, views of the water, and I understand that, but it's, it is pretty obvious when you're there, and you can see that light and sound can travel quite easily across the way. So I have some thoughts about that, but I'd like to hear from the other commissioners.
Commissioner Elmar?
Hi, me, and staff, can you just walk me through general protocol, just for everybody's edification? So the city has a sound ordinance. If you have neighbors that feel it's not in compliance, they're being affected, what they call the city, can you walk through the order of magnitude in terms of calls, reports, protocol, how it plays out?
Sure. So typically, when we receive noise complaints, they go to our code enforcement division. They'll investigate and confirm that there is a noise violation above our city standards. It first starts off with a notice of violation, so it's more of a courtesy notice to the operator, informing them that they're exceeding our noise standard, and we try to work with them to get into compliance. If there's repeated violations, then it escalates into citations and further code enforcement actions.
And how does code enforcement identify that it's exceeding standards?
So our code enforcement officers are trained and authorized to use a sound meter, and they'll go out and actually take sound readings.
And how many, how many calls, violations, what's this, you may not know this, but I'm just gonna, I feel like it's important for the room. How many violations and warnings and then protocol? How does that work? And it, from, from the city's perspective?
It depends on the situation and how the operators kind of cooperate with the city. Typically, if they're working with us to try to resolve it, well, you know, there's a little bit more leniency. If it's a bad operator and, you know, there's no cooperation, we could schedule it for a review of the planning commission to kind of revoke any rights offered under the use permit.
And then for additional edification for everybody, the use permit's conditional. Can you, like, conditional, I believe, for what term? Is it 12 months?
No, so if the planning commission approves a use permit, it's a vested land use right for this operator and the property owner. So unless the planning commission revokes the use permit or calls it back for review and modifies the conditions, they'll be allowed to retain that entitlement, unless another application comes forward and we supersede it, such as what we're doing tonight.
Okay. And then as it sits right now, we are eliminating live music from, with condition number seven, right?
Correct.
Okay. So in theory, the live music, the live music removal, but they still have the ability to utilize music, just not live, correct?
Correct.
And as it sits right now, the outdoor patio is allowed to have amplified music?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. I'll let everybody else speak, and I'll give my opinion here.
Are there any practical applications that we have of restricting or amplified music? Other cases?
Yeah, I've seen it as condition in other restaurants with patios nearby residential uses, so we could add a condition that just prohibits any sort of amplified music on the exterior patios.
And what are the hours right now for their music? Sorry if I don't have it right in front of me.
It would just be the same hours as the restaurant.
So right now, it's 11:00 p.m.?
Yeah, so an alternative is also restricting amplified.
Oh, right now, it's midnight? Yes, right now, it's midnight.
You could also restrict the hours of amplified music on the patio to maybe end earlier.
And we could restrict it to end earlier. Okay. Yeah, this is.
Commissioners, any other comments? No leaning anyway, motion? Mr. Sleen?
Throw out some, some thoughts. I mean, I'm supportive of a, of the patio, but I don't, I'm not supportive of the noise extending onto the neighbors. And I would be, you know, I, for me, and we might want to bring up the applicant to see if they'd be okay with it, I, I think that they should shut down the amplified music outside at, at reasonable hour, and I don't know what that hour is, call it 9:00. And I think if they're willing to shut it down at 10, that's probably not that big of a deal. But I think, I think it's reasonable to shut down the amplified music at a certain, at a reasonable hour. So I would, I mean, I could make a motion to approve with adding that amendment or condition. But I'd love to hear from everybody else what they think.
Yeah, I'll speak up on this one. You know, the guys, this is, this is kind of a tough one, because you have a property to write situation. I totally understand as a, as a homeowner around the water, what sound carries in water. It's, it's, it's real, and the city with our harbor actually faces it all the time, which is kind of a bummer, because if you go to this, you know, back east in Florida, you got some great restaurants with great water and everything else, but they don't have the houses around it. At the same token, you know, this is, the application is just to have some outdoor dining. We've been approving these for other restaurants, it's kind of been customary, but they haven't had the sound on the water. I, I too would be in agreement with Commissioner Sleen and willing to make a motion, but I would, my thought process behind this is, is obviously there's, you have condition number seven, which will eliminate the live music, and then I think we, we prohibit the, the, at least on the outside, on the outdoor seating, we prohibit the live music up until, like, you know, like you said, 8:00.
The amplified music.
The amplified music on, on the outside specifically, up until 8:00. I think that gives them a fair chance. I don't know, I forget, we've tried to do this before in the past, but if there's a way we could bring it back up for review within a year, or if there's any other guardrails that we could put around it, just, just, you know, for this, so that it's, it's evaluated another time. Is there, I'll stop right there. Is there, is, is there a way to do that?
Yeah, there's definitely a way to do that. Actually, 333 had a condition similar to bring it back for a one-year review. I think, trying to think of other cases where, if there haven't been any issues within a year, like, the director has the authority to either bring it up to the commission for one review if there have been issues, but if there haven't been issues, then that can conclude the one-year review as well. So it's kind of up to the commission.
So in addition to, in addition to my thought process there in terms of capping the amplified music on the outside at 8:00, also, also an additional condition to bring it back up with a one-year review, I think would, would be appropriate as well. So those would be my opinions, and I'm, and I'm actually willing to make that motion right now on that one.
On, on the outdoor patio amplified music, they're still subject to city noise?
That's correct.
So it's not they can't just blare it as loud as they want?
Right.
Okay, yeah, got it.
Then just confirm, did you want to incorporate the reduced hours on the patio to 10:00 p.m.?
That's correct. Yeah, the reduced hours on the patio till 10:00 p.m., the amplified music till 8:00, and then the one-year review would be, would be part of my approval.
I will second that one.
Chair, before we vote, could we, could we bring the applicant back up to make sure that they?
Oh, agree with the conditions?
Confirm with conditions, yeah.
The applicant, please come forward. Oh, I have to reopen, I'll now reopen the public hearing. Will the applicant please come forward? Do you agree with the conditions as proposed?
I think so. Just to clarify, the current setup, we do have, it sounds like I was able to confirm with the regional management, we have a DJ currently on Taco Tuesday. So I, with that, we have a DJ currently on Taco Tuesday that is there until 9:00 p.m., so I don't know if that would fall under the live music classification.
I guess, Chair, so a DJ does constitute live entertainment, so if they wish to.
So that's inside the restaurant, and we don't have any type of live music on either of the patios, nor do we wish to.
Part of the original conditions was no more live music.
No more live music, it's part of condition number seven.
Of the original condition?
Yeah.
Where's the original condition?
As the report states, no more live music is allowed on the condition, so your DJ would not be allowed.
Indoors?
Indoors, outdoors. You are, you are, you are foregoing your live music available, you know, option by getting, by having this patio.
And that was part of their application?
Of your original application.
Not a new?
This is nothing new. That's part of your original application.
So that's, okay, that's currently how it's operating right now.
Currently how the application is structured right now.
We would probably be able to commit to closing that extra outdoor patio by 9:00 p.m., if that would help everybody. I did confirm with the regional team, because I know the noise is a concern, so I mean, I don't even think we would need to have it open until 10:00 p.m., if that helps.
No, I don't, I don't think this body is going to be supportive of that. I think, I think, and it's a one-year conditional approval, but I think.
Wait, I think what she's saying is, now it's 11:00, we proposed 10:00, she's saying 9:00. You're saying operations of the patio?
The additional patio that we're trying to get permitted today, I think you guys had suggested 10:00, we can commit to 9:00 p.m. We're not going to be using it later than that.
Just an hour earlier for that.
An hour earlier for that.
If that would help, I mean, for the neighbors' consideration.
I guess, and what about the amplified noise?
Till 8:00.
Till 8:00 p.m.
And that would include music speakers, like, on that patio?
Would stop at 8:00.
If that's what's necessary to get it permitted, I'm sure we could work around that. I mean, 9:00 would be like a meet in the middle. If we can keep the music on until the patio closes, that would be great, but if it needs to come off at 8:00, then.
Our, our position on this, I'll just reiterate, was.
Then that's fine.
Was 8:00 for the music.
Okay.
Patio hours till 10:00, and then a one-year review.
Sure.
Now, you just brought your operating hours from 10:00 to 9:00.
If 10:00 is fine with everybody, then that's okay. Yeah.
It's your, you're the applicant, so it's your call.
And she's saying 9:00 to 9:00. You want amplified till 9:00 and operations till 9:00.
She's accepting the 10:00, we'll close the public hearing. If the commissioners would like to make a counter motion and offer it at 9:00, it sounds like the applicant may be willing.
Just to be considerate of the neighbors.
But you accept the 10:00 p.m., the original condition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, close the public hearing, back to commissioners. Is there an alternative motion, or would you like to continue? Any other questions for staff? The grass in front, is that their property? It looks like it is. Do we get any clarification on that?
Yeah. So I, I think my motion's still consistent. It's the 8:00, the 10:00, and the one-year review. I think that's fair in, in, in terms of what they're asking for. I think it's, I think it's an equitable position as it sits right now. So I'll maintain my motion.
We have a motion in a second, and the conditions have been accepted. Call for a vote. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, moving on to the next item. Item number three, the Monrovia Townhomes, PA 2025-0062. The site location is 580 to 598 Monrovia Avenue and 865 to 899 West 16th Street. Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Harris. My name is Jocelyn Perez. I'm a senior planner with the Planning Division. This public hearing item for your consideration is the Monrovia Townhomes project. The project site is located within the West Newport Mesa neighborhood. The project site is currently two legal lots, and it is developed with a light industrial development. The project site is located at the intersection on Monrovia Avenue and West 16th Street, just across the street from the city of Costa Mesa. Other notable uses within the area include Carden Hall and Coastline College. The project site is zoned industrial, surrounding land uses are also industrial with multi-unit residential, open space, and commercial office down to the eastern side of the project site. As part of the city's most recent housing element update, additional sites were identified as housing opportunity sites. The project site was identified as a housing opportunity site, site 229 and 237, so they were given the added ability for residential development. The proposed project is to demolish the existing industrial site and construct a new residential community, an 89-unit-for-sale development that would consist of single-unit buildings, duplexes, attached townhomes, onsite parking, a dedicated space for deliveries, common open space and amenities, including a pool and a passeo, publicly available, publicly accessible open space, and access to the community could be taken from 16th Street or Monrovia Avenue. A little bit more about the project. The development includes a range of different floor plans, starting with floor plans around 2,000 square feet and two bedrooms, going up to approximately 3,000 square feet and four bedrooms. Each unit will provide an oversized attached two-car garage, and trash storage will occur within the garage. The single unit and duplexes will be four stories and approximately 48 feet above grade, and the attached townhomes will be three stories and approximately 38 feet above grade. In order to implement the project as proposed, the project requires approval of a major site development review, and that's because the project is proposing five or more units with a track map, and also the project is requesting deviations from five multi-unit objective design standards. The project also requires the approval of a tentative track map, and that is to merge those two legal lots and to allow for the future individual sale of those units, so a subdivision, and the project has to be found consistent with the Housing Element Program, EIR. In order to recommend approval of a major site development review, staff must evaluate whether the project's consistent with the general plan, zoning, and any other applicable standards, whether it's consistent with the surrounding development or complementary with the surrounding development, whether there's adequate landscaping and open space, and whether public views are protected. Also, the subdivision has to comply with Title 19, and the environmental clearance must find that there are no significant impact, new significant impacts versus the Program The project is consistent with the general plan, and it's consistent with the zoning standards for a housing opportunity site. So I have the standards for the Newport Mesa. housing opportunity sites in that center column, including a minimum density of 20 dwelling units per acre, minimum setbacks of 10 feet from any street side, and there is a asterisk there to denote that any portion of the building that's above 20 feet in height needs to be set back 20 feet from the street, the side setback requirement is zero, the rear setback is 20, the minimum parking requirement is exceeded, and all development standards for the HO2 housing opportunity overlay are complied with, including common open space and private open space, height, et cetera. The multi-unit objective design standards were adopted as part of our housing opportunity overlay sites, the intent of the multi-unit objective design standards, or the ODS, is to ensure that any multifamily or multi-unit project that comes forward has a high-quality design standard, and the ODS standards are intended to provide a baseline for staff to evaluate a project, including potentially even byright projects, so the ODS is intended to create standards for projects we haven't seen yet. So this project complies with 47 of 52 applicable standards, and is using the site development review process to deviate from five standards, and I want to clarify that to deviate from a standard isn't necessarily a bad thing, because as I mentioned, the ODS standards were created in anticipation of future projects that would come forward. So this project, while it has five deviations, it meets the intent of the ODS, and in many cases exceeds the intent of the ODS, and I've listed the five deviations that they've requested, and I'd like to focus on the PAOS deviation, so I can speak a little bit more in depth about how staff analyzed these deviation requests. So, for example, for publicly accessible open space, there's a standard minimum width, the standard minimum width needs to be 20 feet, however, in this project site, the project site is rectangular, so we have a long length of frontage, and the applicant has proposed a publicly accessible open space that actually provides more than double the minimum square footage, however, it doesn't meet the width requirement, and that's, in this case, it's still, it's meeting the intent of the publicly accessible open space and it's actually exceeding it, but it requires a deviation, and that deviation is just allowing flexibility with the standards, and so there is an in-depth analysis of each deviation request in the staff report beginning on handwritten page 14. The project went through environmental review, the applicant prepared a Section 15183 consistency analysis to determine whether this project was consistent with the Program EIR for our housing element, and the consistency analysis was peer-reviewed by Kim Lee Horn, and the consistency analysis found that there are no new significant environmental impacts, and therefore it's consistent with our existing Program EIR. Staff received letters regarding the project, three in support and one letter with concerns. The letter with concerns was submitted on behalf of Hickson Metals, and they cited a variety of concerns, including noise, aesthetics, that the project is ineligible for the 15183 SEQA exemption, and then they had two requests, and staff believes that the 15183 analysis was adequate, and the project is eligible to use that exemption, and regarding the bottom bullet point there of the request to notify prospective tenants of the nearby industrial uses, the project is already conditioned to have that, and so I've highlighted these, I've placed these conditions on the screen, they're a little bit wordy, so I won't go through them word for word, but condition of approval number nine does require, prior to the certificate of occupancy, that an acoustical study be prepared to demonstrate that these units achieve compliance with the city's noise ordinance, and then condition of approval number 10 has a requirement for the project to disclose to potential tenants and buyers of these characteristics of the nearby industrial uses. I have red lines striked out these conditions to update the reference to City Planning Department, to Planning Division, and then in condition of approval number 10, I've added some additional clarification to what are the noxious characteristics, so noise, odors, operations, delivery, et cetera. The project also has quite a few conditions of approval to ensure compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood, and the project also will be paying a, quite a few fees to the city, I wanted to highlight probably the most important condition of approval here is that the project is required to comply with all the mitigation measures that were a part of the Program EIR for the housing element, and with that, staff is recommending approval of the project, so the next steps would be to conduct the hearing, the public hearing, find the project exempt, statutorily exempt, and adopt the resolution approving the project. That concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions you have on the project, we also have the applicant team here that's available to answer any questions on their proposal, as well as their SEQA consultant that prepared the consistency analysis.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Commissioner Rosina this time? Go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick question about the publicly acceptable or accessible open space standards, I think this might be the first time we've seen it, and obviously the applicant's in compliance, but I have a question associated with this, and that question is, there is a bicycle repair station on the corner of 16th and Monrovia, and I was wondering if there was any reason that this body, if they chose to agree with this statement, could remove the condition number 18 requiring this repair station and instead add a tree?
The project doesn't require that type of amenity be provided, so the code doesn't require it, so if the commission would like to do that, that would be acceptable, it wouldn't violate any standards related to the overlay.
Okay, thank you.
That's the applicant, okay. Commissioners, any ex parte communication?
I met with the applicant.
None.
I met with the applicant.
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 Okay, I will open the public hearing, does the applicant want to make a presentation or comment?
Chair Harris, members of the Planning Commission, good evening, can you hear me okay? My name is Rick Puffer, I'm Executive Vice President at Intercorp Homes, we appreciate staff's thorough presentation of the development that's proposed, and specifically, I'd like to thank Mrs. Perez for her diligence on the past several months going through this project, and knowing that there is a zoning overlay here, applying the objective design standards and going through this process is very thorough, so we appreciate that. Wanted to mention that we've read through the entire staff report with the proposed resolution and conditions of approval, inclusive of what was recently mentioned on condition 18 by Mr. Rosine, and we accept the conditions of approval as noted in the resolution, and will execute this project consistent with these conditions. Briefly, I just want to add my words to what was presented here tonight, and so, a little bit about Intercorp Homes. Intercorp Homes is a privately-owned infill-based real estate developer that specializes in development of residential infill properties across Southern California, our offices are located right here in Newport Beach, we have a presence in three other major markets, which include Vancouver, British Columbia, Seattle, Washington, and Austin, Texas, some of our recent projects, which are there on the right side of the screen, include at the top left, the Isle at Mariner Shores, which was a very well-received 36-unit townhome project, right here in Newport Beach, located at Irvine Avenue and 17th Street, adjacent to the West Quith Shopping Center, next to that, on the right side, top corner, is Lux, a luxury townhome project located within the Irvine Business Complex, on the lower left is a project that's been approved that we're currently building, that's 1401 Quail, it's 67 stacked flat luxury condominium units in that building, it also includes a few affordable rate units in that, in that structure, and on the lower right is The Place, which is located in the city of Costa Mesa, three-story at-market residences with rooftop decks partially covered, that project was also very popular for a number of reasons, and we have people often ask us, we're going to repeat some of these product types, close here in coastal Orange County. I'll move on to the next slide briefly, our consultant team, we have really chose some of the top design firms in Orange County, based on their expertise and their knowledge in the infill residential community such as this, our architect is Bessinian Lagone, our landscape architect, Land Concern, and our civil engineer is Fusco. Brief overview of the community, staff has covered this very well, my words will just explain the periphery of the community and then work within the community itself, as mentioned, the city of Newport Beach, City Council identified this site as part of the sixth cycle housing element in September of 2024, and with that, the City Council created overlay zoning districts, which identified this site, as I mentioned, and introduced the objective design standards, the properties identified, and this property identified in that process, required a density, as mentioned, of 20 to 50 units to the acre, our site complies with the zoning municipal code, as was mentioned, and with that, our density is just over 20 units to the acre at 20.5. Here are a couple highlights about the site, as I mentioned, I'll start from the periphery, there are three entries to the project, one on 16th Street, which is an existing driveway, and two on Monrovia, we designed the project with a large publicly accessible open space that you've heard about, along 16th Street and along Monrovia Ave, this space provides an inviting frontage to the community with a parkway lined with arbutus marina, strawberry trees, and Chinese elms at the back of the walk, the large sidewalk creates a promenade for walking, jogging, bicycling, and doing these activities underneath a consistent canopy of shade trees, which I've mentioned, each of the townhomes face out towards 16th Street and Monrovia, embracing the surroundings, while also providing a courtyard space to socialize and enjoy the ambiance. Along Monrovia Ave, there are currently overhead power poles, as part of this development, we will underground those power poles, which will allow the project to be more visually appealing, and will embrace the neighborhood that it exists within, each home located here has a two-car side-by-side garage, additionally, we have 47 open parking stalls spread throughout the site, bringing our total count up to 225 parking spaces, which is more than the requirement by over 22 parking spaces. The community features, now I'm speaking within the community, in addition to this abundant open space for the benefit of the area and the community, it also provides flexibility in terms of private open space, the common area that is located here within this, this community consists of a pool, a spa with trellis shading the seating areas, and a separate space for outdoor dining, including a barbecue island, there are several private open spaces for residences as well, between the first-floor courtyards, second-floor balconies on the townhomes, and private rooftop decks on the parrot homes, we have two architectural themes here, coastal farmhouse for the townhomes and beach cottage for the parrot homes, as seen in this view is the corner of 16th Street, Monrovia, again, as I mentioned, the architectural theme is patterned after our very successful Isle at Mariner Shores project, and here you can see the arbutus marina trees lining the parkway with the Chinese elms placed at the back of walk, the courtyard wall is there, providing that outdoor private open space for homeowners. From this view, this is looking south on the project, along Monrovia, these townhomes, as I mentioned, face out towards the street, embracing the community, and towards the back of this view to the south are the parrot homes, and you can see the character of the beach cottage elevations there. One thing I do want to mention as just a small correction, there was a table that expressed the square footages, and I noticed in the square footages provided by staff, those square footages included the garages, so those square footages were approximately 400 square feet larger than, than these will be actually, so our range in square footage is about 2,000 square feet, a little bit below that, up to 2,500 and change, on the square footage. Okay, so in this view, this is looking west along 16th Street, from this view, you can see again the elevation here of the coastal farmhouse, and the way that this promenade works, from this perspective, this is also 16th Street, looking at the wide promenade and the activities that can be engaged upon in this parkway space, and the socializing that homeowners will have the chance to, to enjoy, including the community and the This perspective, same, similar view, this shows Monrovia Ave with not only the parkway space, but the implied pedestrian entry to the alleyway, which provides an opening and a centrally-located feature by which pedestrians can enter the community. Sorry for the background noise.
You're doing a great job.
Yeah, I'm trying to keep it.
We're all trying our hardest here.
Trying to go by the rhythm, but I'm
If you'd like to take a
I'm not, I'm not right on the rhythm, but I'll
Just power through, we'll be all right.
Okay. I explained this amenity, so in this slide, about the only thing that I would represent in this slide is, it is a pool and spa with a pool deck, it's got the wraparound fence with the walls on the side that you can see, and then it has the restrooms and the covered island and outdoor dining space, which is in the lower right-hand corner, the trees for this space are the Phoenix dactyliferous date palms, the three across the front, and then a pink trumpet tree, that's where you see number four in the lower right-hand corner. This picture explains in photo what I just explained, so this is where that inspiration comes from, and it's something that's been a highly popular amenity for these homeowners. After a long day, we want to come home and rest and relax, and I love these elevations because it shows how this is popular with, how this will be utilized and integrated into the community, so these, these images and renderings reflect the pool and the spa with that water feature at the back of the spa. As I wrap up here, I just want to mention a few key things, and this slide is important for a few key reasons, this explains the surrounding community and the amenities that are there now, and how this community is growing into a residential hub, there are several bike paths that lead down to Pacific Coast Highway and the beach, that's signified if you can see the, the green arrows that come in front of the site and down over towards east, towards Placentia Avenue, there are several nearby parks, and I'm just going to mention a few of them, we have Sunset Ridge Park, Sunset View Park, West Newport Park, Cliff Drive Park, and many others that are shown here in the, the green symbols, there are also multiple coffee shops, eateries, workouts, gyms situated in what is an eclectic environment that homeowners embrace, a few examples of that are Freelance Coffee Project, Symmetry Fitness, Rogue Collective, and Spectrum Wine. and Spectrum Wine. Briefly, these are some of the community benefits, which you mentioned, this project is compliant with the zoning standards. This supports the local economy with new residences that will increase the patrons, patrons to local eateries and restaurants. It improves the aesthetics of the area with high-quality architecture, and it provides over ten thousand square feet of the publicly accessible open space. This project will also pay a large parking lieu fee of over three million dollars, as noted above. This concludes the presentation tonight for the fifteen eighty community. Once again, we want to thank you for your time and want to restate our commitment to this community. I'm joined tonight with consultants that I mentioned and also several of my coworkers at Intracorp Homes. Thank you.
Thank you for your concentration. We appreciate it, getting through that. You already noted that you agreed with the recommended conditions as they are within the packet and the staff report as, as of now. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant at this time?
Just, and I know I'm trying not to kick a dead horse here, but I wanted to know if this commission agreed to removing the bicycle workstation on that corner, and instead we were able to add some additional landscape and potentially a specimen tree. Would you be willing to agree to that?
Definitely, definitely.
Workstation and racks, yes.
We would be more than willing to make that adjustment.
Thank you.
I had the same comment as Commissioner Rosin. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, does anyone from the audience want to comment on this item?
Chair Harris, members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. In the lobby, there was a copy of that letter from the Hickson Metal Finishing, and I don't know if you've all had a chance to read it or not, but they recount an experience they had with the Ebtide Home Project three hundred feet away, they being an existing industrial use and then a new residential use with unexpectedly-high living spaces was created near them, and that apparently put them out of compliance with the city noise ordinances, and according to their letter, required them to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to mitigate that situation and apparently bring it back into compliance. That's my guess of what they were trying to say, and I should disclose that I am on the General Plan Advisory Committee and actually on the Noise Subcommittee reviewing the noise element, and this is a situation we have not thought about, and I am not speaking on behalf of that committee at all, but speaking as an individual. And I appreciate that there is a condition of approval number ten that is informing future residents that they are in an industrial area. However, telling them that they're in an industrial area doesn't mean that they cannot complain about it, as apparently the people in the Ebtide Development did. This is much closer, and Hickson is anticipating it will create complaints both about aesthetics and about noise. And since Hickson, they had no idea that they were suddenly going to be next to a residential project, I would think if it's possible for you to do that, it really should be the responsibility of the developer to pay for the mitigation, if any is needed in the future. So if it, even though they're informed, they could complain, and if the city verifies that they're now out of compliance, it should not be Hickson's responsibility, in my personal opinion. So I think there should be a condition that the developer is responsible for mitigation if there are issues that arise. And then the other comment I have, this is the second overlay project, I believe, that's come before you for consideration. Neither of them has developed or produced what the housing element expected. In this particular case, the staff reports that we were promising the state that we could develop two hundred and sixteen units here, and we're not doing that. And the other one, the Ford Road, we didn't produce as many as they said, and we're especially not producing twenty-two moderate units and sixty-five lower, lower-income units. Those, I believe, are going to eat away at the buffer that we promised that we were going to have, and at some point, if the buffer gets completely eaten up by producing projects that don't provide that, we will have to raise those already controversial caps on how many units can go in these different focus areas. And I think that residents are not going to appreciate seeing those levels go up higher, but that won't be happen if the buffer goes away. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you to the members of the commission for this opportunity to speak tonight and voice my concerns about, associated with the Monrovia project.
Sir, may I wave your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, here it is. My name is Bruce Green. I'm the Environmental Health and Safety Manager at Hickson Metal Finishing, located at eight twenty-nine production place in Newport Beach. Hickson has been operating in its current location since nineteen fifty-eight in a city-approved industrial zone. Hickson Metal Finishing is located approximately one hundred and thirty feet from the proposed project. First, I'd like to say that Hickson is generally not opposed to any form of development within the city of Newport Beach and generally applauds most all forms of development as an advantage for the city. But we do have some grave concerns as, over the possible impact of the development that may, that, that may, sorry, the development may have upon Hickson Metal Finishing, since the SEQA documents did not account for this type of development within an industrial zone. Several years ago, there was a similar project known as the Ebtide Development that was built across, across Placentia Avenue, approximately three hundred feet from our facility. Soon after completion, we began to receive noise complaints from the residents because they could hear our industrial equipment that was located on the top of our roofs from their rooftop deck areas. This has led to a multi-year design, testing, and soon-to-be construction project that will include the installation of custom sound walls that Hickson has been forced to install at the cost of several hundred thousands of dollars. This noise was not an issue prior to the development of the Ebtide project, since the noise could not be heard at ground level from the surrounding properties. My fear at this, at this point is that the project, if it is approved as is, with no consideration that the project is in a, to be constructed surrounded by a area legally-zoned for industrial use, with fourth-story deck, decks located even closer in proximity and at higher elevations than the Ebtide project, that once again Hickson Metal Finishing will begin to receive noise complaints and will be forced, once again, to pick up the tab and implement new and extremely costly mitigation measures. Quite simply, our business cannot survive the cost of continued operational changes to conform to new projects that have not been evaluated and the lack of adequate mitigation measures. With the project being one hundred and fifty feet from Hickson's property line, the likelihood of new complaints from its tenants almost becomes a foregone conclusion. We respectfully request that the approval of the project be denied until the appropriate noise and land use studies are performed as part of the SEQA process. Thank you.
Good evening, Adam Leverens. Given the housing crisis, I mean, any form of additional housing is appealing. However, I would presume from the architectural renderings, little of this would be affordable, moderate, or lower-income, and, and the city, all the housing proposals I keep seeing don't address that issue. I know developers want to make as much money as possible, but at some point, there needs to be housing for people that work in the restaurants and the bars and the surf shops and whatnot. Just an observation about the parking, I appreciate the CCNR that will require people to park in their garage, but I believe some of these units had four bedrooms. You can imagine there may be renters. I have family that lives close by there, I spent a lot of time up there house-sitting. It's an interesting area with the mix of housing and industrial and all the parks they mentioned, but this is going to impact parking, even with the requirement that cars park in their garages. And then, as Mr. Mosher and the previous gentleman spoke about, I, it's troubling when businesses or places have been there for a long time, and somebody buys a home and then forces the business out, so I really hope that some of the ideas that have been posed could be looked at. Sounds like that fabrication place has been there since the fifties, and while I totally advocate for more housing, forcing out businesses and the associated jobs and whatnot is real problematic, in my opinion. Thank you.
Evening Commissioners, Adwood with the Building Industry Association. Thanks for the opportunity to comment. We submitted a letter, hopefully you had a chance to take a look at that, but more than anything, wanted to come in here tonight and say a big thank you to staff. This is one of the more impressive packets I've seen put together for a housing application. Lot of detailed information has been put in here, a lot of homework went into this. Many concerns have been raised, but when you get into the weeds of this, a lot of these things have been considered, the discussions have occurred, a hundred-something pages here, I forget what the total number was, and even still, the staff recommendation comes down, a recommendation for support. So we're very excited to see that happen. Eighty-nine units for sale. Don't have to tell anybody up here, Newport Beach is probably one of the most desirable areas in the entire country to live. To add to the for-sale stock in this community is a huge, huge win, very exciting to see that brought forward. So kudos to the applicant and all the work that went into getting us to this point. It's no small feat to, to accomplish something like that, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Does the applicant want to respond to anything?
Can you hear me okay? Yeah, just briefly.
Better than we could before, thank you.
Okay, good. It's, it's better for me, too. Just briefly, wanted to mention two things about the project and the site. We have two product types, so we are trying to accommodate the desires of different buyers in today's market, a more entry-level townhome project for somebody living in Newport Beach, whereas a larger project would be somebody who could afford a little bit larger home. As I brought up in the slides, we're trying to build in several infill communities, and we always work with the neighbors, we always work in several settings like this, and for that, I wanted to mention that we have a disclosure that we put in, and it's, you've seen it here brought up tonight by staff, which discloses the existing uses. It discloses that there is ambient noise and that it was there before the project was there, so that part is covered. Also, what hasn't been mentioned is through the plan check process itself, we do an exterior noise analysis, so we make sure our homes are protected from the noise that exists in the ambient community, and we build to that. Last, I would note that while we do have rooftop decks, they're partially covered. One product type, fifty-one units, no rooftop decks. The other half of the job, thirty-eight units are partially-covered rooftop decks, so they have windows, they're fully enclosed. Part of when you go outside, it has a roof overhead. These are protections, not only from the sun, but also from noise. And to that, last, I will mention, while we do have twenty-two spaces on-site above the requirement, we're also not counting street parking. So I thank you for those items and the opportunity to address the planning commission tonight, so thank you for your diligence. If there's any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you. Staff, any comments for the record?
Yes, Chair, I just want to add a little light to the comments made by Mr. Bruce Green regarding Hickson. So I, I've been working with Mr. Green for a long time now, and they definitely have invested a substantial amount of money into their facility within the city. One of the issues we've been working with them closely on is they installed a scrubber on the roof to address some concerns from the AQMD regarding some emissions, and it does produce noise, and so we've been working with them closely, they've been collaborating with city staff, and they're going to be installing some sound attenuating screens around that scrubber, and that was really intended to address the noise to the existing residential directly behind Hickson and to Ebtide, which were in existence. In this case, the responsibility is placed on the developer through condition number nine, to ensure that they're going to attenuate noise and adjust for the ambient noise levels that they're developing in.
And just a thought, perhaps on, just for, for the record, and, and maybe to the advisory, the noise advisory committee or something, we could look at, you know, these are obviously, with these housing elements and, and more projects in like mixed-use urban areas that maybe the underlying zoning could be looked at in some of these areas of what's allowable and, and what levels, and, you know, at least then they're not out of compliance if, you know, that is, that is a strange occurrence when they're in compliance on the, on the ground, but, you know, twenty, thirty feet up, they're not. That's, that's difficult.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Commissioner Rosin?
Regarding the responsibility for potential issues that came from this development and the assertion that aesthetics and noise are, I've heard two things now, I've heard one that, that's the developer, could be the developer's responsibility according to a condition of approval, and then Hickson is clearly stating that they think it's their responsibility. Interested in hearing staff's take as on that.
Yeah, so just to read it, with, the case for Hickson, it's they recently installed new equipment, and that new equipment was adding to the, the sound levels above what was previously occurring on site, and so that's what we've been working to address, is installation of that new equipment. So, once all that issue is addressed and the sound attenuating screens are in place, that's going to establish kind of the new baseline. You know, if in the future Hickson adds another piece of equipment, we're going to be comparing it against the baseline, and the baseline is what we call like the ambient noise level, so that's the noise levels before they made any changes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, close of public hearing, and bring it back to the commission for discussion action. Any thoughts, commissioners? Commissioner Langford?
Thank you, Chair Harris. It's fun to see a project proposed over on this side of the city. I know we spent the last six years going through the housing element and identifying housing opportunity sites, and a lot of them were along Sixteenth Street and then Monrovia, but I didn't really know how they would end up looking when people started bringing the proposals in, so it's nice that this project is right at the corner to kind of invite other builders to come in and, and do more projects. I love that they're expanding that sidewalk area that, to, to be publicly accessible, I think that's really great. It'd be great if that whole Sixteenth Street and Monrovia both ways kind of had those big, open, public-accessible areas, especially with the Randall Preserve going in. I think that whole area could really change for, and it could be a brand-new kind of community for Newport, so I like all that. It's hard, though, to be the first, especially with the industrial uses that are in there, so I feel for, for Hickson and the other uses there, but I am confident that with the conditions that we have in there, that it'll all get figured out. So I love the, love the project, love the beautification of the area. Intracorp has a great reputation in the area and has done great things for us already, so I'm supportive of the project, and those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Alba?
Yeah, I think it's, look, we see a lot of these, it's a very clean application. I, I can make all the findings to support this. I think the developer is very thoughtful in regards to their attention to detail for the community, that local area, as well as this bigger project. I'm happy to make the findings. I'm happy to make the findings and make a motion to approve this item.
Comment, Commissioner Rosin?
Oh, I'm sorry. I too am excited to see for-sale housing being brought into this area. And, you know, I think that this will be a great opportunity, and hopefully this will expand that, this type of product in the area. I would like to ask for my fellow commissioners to consider this bicycle workstation, and if they would be willing to remove this workstation to allow for some additional landscape in this location. So those are my thoughts. If that's something that the commission would be willing to incorporate into any motion, I would appreciate it.
Commissioner Saleen?
I just want to say again, I think this is a good-looking project. I think a lot of work has gone into it, and I think it'll be great. I would encourage, though, Intercorp to, rather than try to bury the disclosure of the industrial uses around there in the CCNRs, to make it a bit more prominent so that the buyers actually look at and acknowledge the specific thing, so that these guys don't get burdened with any further devices or what have you. Because it happens all the time. People, they see it, they move in, and then they don't like it. And it's frustrating, and I can imagine it's frustrating to Hickson. I would modify the motion to remove condition, what is it, 18?
I'm supportive of that.
And so.
One clarification, staff, on process. Since it was brought up when the applicant was still up, and they said they would be supportive if that was, modification was made on a motion, are we covered now, or do I need to reopen the public hearing?
You're good.
Okay. Any other comments?
Okay. Kind of echo everyone. My kids actually go to school across the street. I love the setbacks, I love the underground, the power lines. You know, we're trying to create some mixed uses in these areas and energize them. It sounds like they're very aware of the potential impacts around the area, and as long as, like everyone said, people are made aware of where they're living, and it's all upfront for them, I think it's, I think it's fine, and I think people want to live in a diverse area that offers a little more. So I'm happy to make a motion with the condition of removing the bicycle service station.
I think my motion was there.
Was it there? Or I'll second.
Modify, so let me go ahead and modify my motion for, to remove number 18, as condition number 18, as discussed, and as the applicant agreed to.
Second. Before we start, the next one, I'd like to take a couple-minute break, real quick.
Thank you. We can start real quick. Congrats.
Congrats, applicant.